Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. Tonight's city council meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our distinguished city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, prior to the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to ask everyone's indulgence in a moment of silence to honor, as all of you now know, Joe Greenberg, the consummate ambassador of downtown Geneva who worked for The Little Traveler for 50 years. For those of you who are unaware, Mr. Greenberg was at the tender age of 95 when he passed away and worked up until one month prior to his passing. He is an immigrant from Russia. He had a very interesting career throughout his life, and obviously he found his calling in serving others. I know that Mr. Simon, certainly Mr. Greenberg's longtime partner, his son and daughter, are heartbroken over the loss, as are we. All of you know that there will be a ceremony honoring his life, and as part of that life honoring event, there will be dancing, because Joe Greenberg was an incredible dancer and loved to dance. So if you could perhaps find your way to dance some nine and a half decades through life, that would be a success story. So on behalf of the city council, if you could just please recognize Joe and send his thoughts to his family, that'd be wonderful. Thank you very much. Folks, on September 9th of this year, Alderman Cavan celebrates his birthday, so it's only fitting that he lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight, and happy 70th.
That'd be 35.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
My apologies on the age, I thought I could have sworn, I must have misread that. Any big plans for the big birthday?
No.
It's good to see you have a lot of people in your life to help you celebrate that, it's exciting. Folks, we have a full agenda this evening, and it's my honor to jump to item 3A, which is to consider the mayor's appointment of Susan Finson to the Geneva Mental Health Board. All of you should have an email from me attached thereto as a application by Mrs. Finson to serve. She comes highly recommended by the chairwoman, Mrs. Shogren, and it's my pleasure to introduce all of you who have not yet met Mrs. Finson. She begged me not to require her to come to the podium, so I'm going to honor her request by not doing so. So, are there any questions that you can relay through me, then I'll send to her later so she'll have to come to the podium? Sue, this is very exciting.
It is.
It is. And there's a gift to present Mrs. Finson after the vote is taken by the chairwoman, so if it's not a unanimous vote, that gift will be rescinded. Is there a motion, ladies and gentlemen, to appoint Mrs. Finson to the Geneva Mental Health Board? Alderman Maladra makes that motion?
Second.
And Alderman, is that Bruno?
You can give it to Mayor.
Oh, Alderman Mayor, excuse me, is the second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Look at that. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
And enjoy the experience as well. I am certain that Chairwoman Shogren has shared with you, and I know you know intimately the important work that you do, particularly it seems like now more than ever. So thank you again for volunteering, and we will discuss pay and company car at a later date, so.
(inaudible) special gift?
Oh, the special gift, check it out. Chairwoman Shogren has, look at that, official City of Geneva.
City of Geneva man.
Yeah. Isn't that great?
Fashion accessory.
And I should, I have to ask, because we all are big fans of the Finson family, everyone's well? Kids are great?
Everybody's good, yes. No one isn't home right now, we are empty masters.
Unbelievable, isn't it? Wow.
Exciting.
It is exciting. So you have something to do now, right?
Scott still needs a lot of care.
Yeah, actually, I thought that was a cowboy behind you, I didn't know who that was, I thought. And Scott, congratulations to Ethan.
To who?
Your son.
To Ethan?
Your son, yeah. Susan and...
I didn't know what he did to get congratulations.
Well, a full ride scholarship to law school is pretty good.
Well, yeah.
That's not too shabby. Good Lord. Alderman Casarog got a full ride to the St. Charles Boys' Home. You should be proud of that. Okay, folks, thank you again.
Thank you.
And feel free to sneak out if you need to. It looks as if Chairwoman Shogren's ready to go. By all means.
That's a professional.
That is good. Amendments to the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, are there any amendments to tonight's agenda? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. Those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Swanson makes that motion?
Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the second. Any questions, any comments? Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir, please take the roll.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Item 5 passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Jump to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills are $3,125,499.18.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available in each council member's packet and on the city's website. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Casarog. Any questions at all? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
The municipal bills have been approved with a vote of 10 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent. Item 12A, folks, consider resolution number 2021-75, authorizing execution of First Amendment to Tax-Increment Finance Redevelopment Agreement, Country-Village Meets, by and between the City of Geneva and Prairiesburg Holdings LLC, Series 2, located at 715 East State Street. Is there a motion to bring this matter to the floor?
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion, Alderman Maladra makes the second. Ms. Dawkins, is there anything you'd like to?
Sure, just briefly. So you may recall in 2020, December of 2020, the city council approved a TIF financing redevelopment agreement for Country Village Meets. The agreement provided for reimbursement of certain redevelopment costs, including electric and other utility upgrades. As stipulated, Country Village Meets can apply for reimbursement at the time of substantial completion of certain phases. To initiate electric upgrades, a permit holder is required to submit prepayment based on estimated costs. The deposit amount for Country Village Meets would be $62,881.67. Such payment can be in the form of a letter of credit or cash. Due to present-day high cost of raw materials and equipment, project costs have escalated, and to relieve the need to borrow and be reimbursed, Country Village Meets is seeking a modification to the reimbursement procedures outlined in the redevelopment agreement and has requested that the city consider a fund transfer to cover the deposit. In turn, the redevelopment agreement would be amended to remove the transferred amount from the reimbursable total. Because the city has the needed equipment in stock, such modification will not require a capital outlay, and the consideration for the council this evening is an amendment to the redevelopment agreement effectuating this request. We do have Kathleen Timoshenko here, if there are any questions, and I'm not sure, is Paul Darrow here as well? Sorry, hard to recognize people, and also the applicant Paul Darrow is in the room if you have any additional questions.
From the dais, any comments or questions for either the Director of Economic Development, Timoshenko, or the applicant, Mr. Darrow? Alderman Kilburg, sir.
Does this apply just to the one financial action on our part, or does it apply to future change orders to the agreement down the road? In other words, are we going to see more of these in the future?
At this point, this one just applies to this particular instance. I do not know, Kathleen, do you have any comments on any others that are hanging out there?
We don't anticipate any future similar types requests. We won't have a situation whereby we would have money coming to reimburse another account. There's no other owes to the city that this would be applicable to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Cavan, sir.
Thank you. I understand what's in front of us right here, but has there been, how much has already been done at that building?
Mr. Darrow could explain that if you'd like, have firsthand information.
Good evening, Mr. Darrow.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. So as far as the work at the building itself, about a month ago, it got going in earnest beyond the demolition aspects of the building. So plumbing has been put in, so the floors are all saw cut up, and the drain pipes are all put in. The lentils have been replaced around the windows, so that'll facilitate replacing the windows later, though we found out the lentils were bad, so those have been replaced. They've started some drywall work and some studying in the interior of the structure, and in about a week here, you're going to see a ton of activity get going with the rest of the build-out. But, yeah, so it's gotten going a little slower than we thought. That was related to kind of three things. The engineering and the design work took a little longer than we thought, and then when you're renovating an old building, you find surprises. The lentils were the surprise for us. All the lentils were bad, they're all rusted out, they had to be replaced. That caused a delay from a timing standpoint to figure that out, and that work has to be done before the rest of the work can be done. So as I mentioned, that should be wrapping up here in another week. And then the last thing is lead times on everything. If you're involved in any kind of construction project right now, the lead times are usually double, if not more, on all the materials. So a lot of the materials, there's delays in the timing on those materials. But we should get rocking and rolling here in about a week. You'll see a lot of build-out going on, and we anticipate probably having the construction part of the project done in early December. That's where we're headed for it.
Okay, great, and I know that, like you had indicated, lead time and other different things, as well as I know that the cost of a lot of things as well is different now than maybe it was when you originally started planning, but I know that Alderman Kilburg was sort of asking, you know, if we should expect to see more of these coming, and I know that that's already been asked and answered and all of that. So I don't have any problem, I don't have any problem with this, I'm just hopeful that as the project continues to go, it definitely runs smoothly for you and everything, everything works out well, so.
Really is, you're welcome, thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Kilburg, sir.
So as it relates to your project and everything, as far as staff is expediting things and helping you, as far as trying to move things along as quickly as possible, I know I thought originally in December, you thought that maybe by late summer you'd be operational, and obviously that's been delayed, but is there anything else that we can be doing as a city to support your efforts to get that business open and turning sales tax dollars?
Sure, I appreciate that question. Well, you're going to get a chance to vote on another resolution around the transfer of the property, so that is another big step in the process that you can help us with. Otherwise, I've been very, very happy, and the response with Kathleen has been great, very supportive, you know, in moving us forward and helping me along the way. So, no, the delays that we've been, you know, working through are really more part of an old building and just the state of the industry of construction right now. But we're really excited, I'll just throw this out here too, we're really excited today. If you're a small business, probably the biggest thing you face right now is getting good quality help, and we're out in the marketplace looking for two people to help us run this store, and we got one of them signed up today, and a really quality person right here from Geneva, and we have good leads on the other position, so we're feeling really good about that. That's probably my biggest concern, way more concerned about that than the actual construction and that part of the project. I feel that that, the construction, timing, and everything is all in good shape.
I see your contractor, I see that they posted a sign over there, Sequoia, where are they based out of?
Out of Aurora.
Aurora, okay.
Yep.
Good, thank you. Good luck to you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Anyone else? If not, we have a motion, we have a second. A roll call vote would be in order. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take that roll.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Item 12A has been approved with 10 affirmative votes, 0 nay votes, and 0 absent. Item 12B, consider resolution number 2021-76, authorizing the sale of surplus property. Is there a motion? Alderman Casarog makes the motion?
Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so as you heard alluded to in the last item, the agreement with Country Village Meets authorized a property acquisition to grant the transfer of certain surplus vacant land previously leased to the city, leased by the city to suke up appliance for onsite vehicular parking. The transfer of the parking lot land to Prairiesburg Holding LLC will facilitate the reuse of the mixed-use property by improving onsite parking for residents, employees, and customers. Moving the land to private ownership reduces future public maintenance responsibilities and return real estate to the tax rolls for the benefit of all taxing districts. All existing easements and a new blanket easement for city utilities will encumber the land as needed. So in order to do this, we need a resolution that's presented to you this evening to declare the property surplus and authorize the sale of the property. Again, we have both Paul Darrow with us and Kathleen Timoshenko to answer any additional questions.
Questions regarding this matter, item 12B. Seeing none, sensing none? A roll call vote would be in order. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent, item 12B has been adopted. Congratulations, sir. Item 12C, consider ordinance number 2021-15, authorizing the issuance of waterworks and sewerage revenue bonds of the city in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8,300, oh, excuse me, $8,300,000, or in lieu thereof, Geneva Obligation Bonds, Alternative Revenue Source, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8,300,000, for the purpose of paying certain outstanding obligations payable from the existing combined waterworks and sewerage system. Anybody understand that? Make a motion.
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion, Alderman Mayor makes the second, Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so in short, shorter than the most, the agenda item, essentially this ordinance is to authorize the issuance of bonds not exceeding 8.3 million, including all expenses related to the refunding. This refunding opportunity, net of fees, has an approximate present value savings between $653,000 and $750,000 over the next nine years, and will not extend the maturity of the current debt. In order to do this, notice of intent to issue the bonds and a right to file petitions will be published following approval of the ordinance. If a petition is signed by a predetermined number of electors that ask the question to be submitted to referendum is filed within 30 days, we would have to do that. Otherwise, we will have a public hearing on October 4th with final ordinance presented for passage on October 18th. So essentially, in short, this is just a refunding of current debt, it does not extend the debt. The reason it's 8.3 million is due to governmental accounting procedures. You have to show, it's kind of like your house, you have to show the full amount that you're refunding and the full amount of the bonds that you're taking out. So if there are any additional questions, we do have Finance Director Cruz with us this evening.
Director Cruz or Ms. Dawkins are available for questions from the dais. Anyone? Alderman Kilburg, sir.
So essentially, we're going to be, we're going to be securing new municipal bonds then, right? And we're going to let that at some point in time here over the next 30 days, based off of the bond market? Is that why we have the spread?
Yes, because we really don't know what that market's going to be when we finally actually sell the bonds or deliver the bonds in mid-November. So the spread is just what they believe the market will be in the future, we just don't know until we actually do the sale of those bonds.
And these would be municipal bonds then?
Yes, alternate revenue source, which means they'll be backed by the full faith and credit of the City of Geneva, but also by the water fund as well.
How does our current bond rating play into this then?
So right now, our current bond rating is AA. We will be rerated in about the middle of next month, so we don't know what that's going to look like, but that will be a complete rerating, and then that will play into effect wherever we do land at that point in time.
So roughly, what's the interest rate these bonds will be at then versus where we were at?
I did not bring that piece of paper, I can get that to you, but it's a range. I mean, we're really refunding things that are, you know, 2012 was higher interest rates, especially when you look at the, there's also 2007, '08 bonds for the sewer bonds, sorry, not bonds, for the loans, for the Illinois EPA. And those are much higher rates typically. Those rates are so good, you actually don't have an opportunity to refund them, but this time, because the interest rates right now are so low, we can actually take those in as well.
Is there anything else pending that we might consider refinancing in the next year?
No, actually, because right now, the electric, all the electric bonds are currently paid off. The water bonds, the only alternate geo, alternate bonds, are the ones we're refunding here today for 2012. The SSA bonds will be done as of next year as well, and last year, we paid off the commuter parking bonds. So in essence, the only bonds that are left are in the water fund after next year. That's it.
Good work, thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion, we have a second, and we have the clerk here to take the roll.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Item 12E has been adopted with 10 affirmative votes, 0 nay votes, and 0 council members absent. Item 12F, consider ordinance number 2021-18, granting a zoning map amendment to rezone property located behind 419 West State Street, from downtown residential scaled commercial mixed-use to downtown commercial mixed-use. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Mayor, and Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so Marshall McCarty, owner of The Walrus Room, would like to convert 570 square feet of parking, of the parking lot on the north side of the restaurant to an outdoor patio to serve the restaurant. The parking area is located in a different zoning district. All accessory improvements are required to be located on the same zoning lot as the principal use they serve. The owner of the property, Tim Riley, has agreed to restructure the parcels and petition for the zoning map amendment to create a new zoning lot in order to allow for the outdoor patio improvement. At its meeting on August 26, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the requested zoning map amendment. And David DeGroot is still with us this evening, and I believe Marshall McCarty, no?
Is not here this evening.
Okay. So, any questions?
Questions or comments for Cuckoo Koo Choo, David DeGroot, the Walrus man. Notice the, you got that? Okay, no problem, God help us all. Any questions from Mr. DeGroot? This is very clever, very creative. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. DeGroot, I think I'm all in on this, just one question, just so I can have plausible deniability. There is nothing in this that will open up any can of worms that can build much higher in that traditional, in that transitional zoning area.
So, the requested zoning district does allow a height of 50 feet and does not require any setbacks from the property lines, but this area is currently improved with a parking lot. So as we'll see in the next meeting, in order to remove the existing parking spaces, you have to make a payment to remove those spaces. It's also a very small area, about 3,000 square feet, so as its own zoning lot, it's landlocked, it's really not a buildable lot. It would have to be part of this larger lot with the Riley's strip center there and the Walrus Room.
Okay, but nothing can bleed out of this parcel into that transitional zoning?
No, I mean, that's the purpose, to create a separate zoning lot here, so there's a clear distinction between the two.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Kilburg?
Yeah, the three parking slots that were going to be reimbursed for, the situation as far as parking in that, in that area, it doesn't seem as though there's much congestion or demand for parking necessarily in that, at the old Riley Drug Site there. Is that correct, or do we anticipate that?
At its meeting on August 12, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of a text amendment that would increase the fair market value as described. And again, we have Director DeGroot here to answer any additional questions.
Questions for Director DeGroot from the dais. Seeing none? Sensing none? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarog.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Item 12E has been adopted with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero council members absent. Item 12F, consider ordinance number 2021-18, granting a zoning map amendment to rezone property located behind 419 West State Street from downtown residential scaled commercial mixed use to downtown commercial mixed use. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Mayor, and Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so Marshall McCarty, owner of the Walrus Room, would like to convert 570 square feet of parking, of the parking lot on the north side of the restaurant to an outdoor patio to serve the restaurant. The parking area is located in a different zoning district. All accessory improvements are required to be located on the same zoning lot as the principal use they serve. The owner of the property, Tim Riley, has agreed to restructure the parcels and petition for the zoning map amendment to create a new zoning lot in order to allow for the outdoor patio improvement. At its meeting on August 26, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the requested zoning map amendment. And David DeGroot is still with us this evening, and I believe Marshall McCarty?
No?
Is not here this evening. Okay. So, any questions?
Questions or comments for Kukuku Choo, David DeGroot, the Walrus man? Notice the, notice the, you got that? Okay, no problem. God help us all. Any questions from Mr. DeGroot? This is very clever, very creative. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. DeGroot, I think I'm all in on this. Just one question, just so I can have plausible deniability. There is nothing in this that will open up any can of worms that can build much higher in that traditional, in that transitional zoning area.
So, the requested zoning district does allow a height of 50 feet and does not require any setbacks from the property lines, but this area is currently improved with a parking lot. So, as we'll see in the next meeting, in order to remove the existing parking spaces, you have to make a payment to remove those spaces. It's also a very small area, about 3,000 square feet, so as its own zoning lot, it's landlocked, it's really not a buildable lot. It would have to be part of this larger lot with the Riley's strip center there and the Walrus Room.
Okay, but nothing can bleed out of this parcel into that transitional zoning?
No, I mean, that's the purpose, to create a separate zoning lot here, so there's a clear distinction between the two.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Kilburg?
Yeah, the three parking slots that we're going to be reimbursed for, the situation as far as parking in that, in that area, it doesn't seem as though there's much congestion or demand for parking necessarily in that, at the old Riley Drug Site there. Is that correct, or do we anticipate that this is gonna create any problems as far as looking at it long-term?
I think that's probably better suited for the discussion at the next meeting regarding the removal of those parking stalls, but we currently don't observe any trouble there with parking, but that could always change with the change of tenant.
Okay. Sorry, that was an inappropriate question, I guess.
It's okay, I just, I think it's...
You can ask it again.
Alderwoman Burkhardt?
Thank you, Mayor. David, so is this really the only way that this could be accommodated, this request for the outdoor patio? I mean...
And it's a unique situation there where they have, if you look at the parking lot, it seems like it would all be tied to the Riley's Center, but it's actually on a separate parcel and a separate zoning district when you get to the north side of the building. And all the accessory uses for any principal use have to be on the same zoning lot, so it's, it really is the only way to kind of redefine those boundaries.
Does this make sense even if the Walrus Room, you know, decides to close that outdoor patio or something? I mean, do you see, is there any, I don't know, I mean, we're kind of doing this for one request. Does that concern you at all, or does this make sense to bring these parcels all under the same zoning?
I think it makes sense because right now it functions that way, and right now it's all under one ownership, if you take the Hamilton Street property and the Riley's property, but there are two separate parcels, so they could easily be, one could be sold, and then you would have an issue where you might have improvements that serve the Riley's Center now belonging to another owner that doesn't want those improvements there. So, I think this, creating this kind of small parcel and rezoning it and making one clear zoning lot avoids any potential confusion down the road.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Item 12F has been adopted with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero council members absent. Item 13, folks, public comments and new business. I know we have a distinguished gentleman here who wishes to address the City Council. In the spirit of interest, I provided him with just one?
Just one.
Cup of coffee earlier, so...
Yeah, I already drank the coffee, so I'm not nervous anymore.
What did you put in the coffee?
Yeah, what'd you put in the coffee? That's right. Anyways, some of you, some of you know me. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Sam Giardano. I live at 801 Center Street. I've lived there since 1975. Good citizen. Anyways, I have an issue. About a month ago, I had a contractor, a fence contractor, come over to my house to give me an estimate on some fence. I live by an alley, so in the alley, we were gonna put privacy fence, transition down to four feet, and then on the front of the house, which is the side of my garage, we were gonna go with aluminum fence, four feet high, that's what he put on the contract, and the front was gonna have stone pillars every 10 feet and this aluminum fence. Aluminum fence that looks kind of like this, that does not block the view of any kind. So, the contractor came here to the City Hall to get the permit. I gave him a down payment. He came back to me and he says, "Sam, the village shoved me down. You can only build, engineer a fence 42 inches high." He says, "That's unheard because standard sizes are 36, 48, whatever five feet is. There's no such thing as 42-inch-high fence. If you want 42-inch size, height, it's a custom size," which he says, "I can do it for you, but it'll triple the cost because manufacturers only build standard sizes." And I got booklets in here to show you that the sizes are three feet, four feet, five feet, you know, on the height. And I've been trying to talk to the city, I talked to Mike Bruno, and it seems like, you know, I'm not getting anywhere. I talked to some city people here that get permits, and they said that about five years ago, they tried to change this law, I mean, this code, and it never got through it. So, maybe I'm here to make a difference, you know? Maybe we can change this issue that's really not a big thing, you know? Six inches, if we all know what six inches is, is as much. You know, if anybody knows a tape measure, what six inches is, is not that much. And besides, I'm not blocking any view with the aluminum fence, which the rails are six inches apart, and it's for curb appeal. I just wanted to do something nice. If anybody knows where I live, I've done a lot of nice things for the house outside. I'm trying to do still nice things for the house. About a month ago, I had an issue with my deck. I finally got that resolved because I went with the variance, and I got it approved. And now I had an extra buck to do this fence because we got little dogs, and we wanted to put them in the backyard there and let them run around, you know, because in the street, they can get run over. And I'm hoping that, you know, I can make a difference, you know, on this code going from 42 to 48, you know? Because again, I keep repeating myself, 42 inches is not any standard size out there in the, in the business. And if it's gonna cost me triple, I will never put that fence up, you know? And that's what they all tell you, you know? There's no such thing as 42-inch height. They go by three feet, four feet, and so on and so forth. I like to put that fence up if all possible because with the stone pillars, you know, being where I live, if anybody knows where I live, it will look nice. I'm not doing the front of the house, it's just the side of my house by my garage, and then I live by the alley. The alley's gonna be, like I say, the six-foot privacy, transition down to four by the street, and then four feet aluminum all the way to the garage, which is about 34 feet from the alley to the garage, and then close it up. And that's all I had to say, you know? I, I'm hoping that, you know, we can all realize this, it's a, it's a minor problem, you know? 42, 48, you know?
Mr. Giardano, I'm gonna ask our community development director, Mr. DeGroot, to consult with the building department with regard to this and give back to you directly.
Okay.
Mr. DeGroot, with respect to our consideration of this matter several years ago, do you recall that?
No.
Sam, where's your daughter tonight?
She's at home.
I thought you weren't allowed to leave without her present.
She probably would've done better than me.
No, no, no.
I do, I do believe it was maybe five or six years ago. We had, we had run into similar situations kind of repeatedly, and we also had conflicts with the swimming pool and spa code where that requires a 48-inch fence. So, we had corner lots, if you had a pool, you couldn't, you couldn't comply with our code and the swimming and spa code. So, we brought forth an amendment or a policy discussion for the committee of the whole back then, and I think the conclusion was that kind of that's what the variation process is for, is that to address those unique situations.
Okay.
And then the choice at that time was not to amend the code.
Okay. Sam, if you don't object, well, David will do some additional research as well just to get everything accurate for you, for your review, and then we'll go from there.
I'm open, you know? I'm open to get some answers, you know?
Okay, you got it.
Hopefully, I'll make, make a difference for the rest of the citizens of Geneva, you know?
Well, just in the interest of full disclosure, I cannot afford to give you free coffee moving forward, so...
But thank you for being with us. Thank you.
Say hi to everybody.
Okay. Good night, everybody.
Anyone else? Oh, excuse me, Alderwoman Ruby?
Thank you. So, I'm just curious, so every fence in Geneva that isn't 42 inches tall was a special, they got permission? They got special permission for that?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Some fences are installed without permits, and it's 42 inches in the street yard. So, in your side yard, you're allowed to have up to six feet tall.
Ah, okay.
And then in some situations where there is a pool on a corner lot, they have applied for a variation and got the 48 inches to comply with that code.
Okay. So, the 42 inches is for the front or...
Right, so yeah, the front yard, or if you're a corner lot, both street yards.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone online, Mr. McCready?
No one joining us this evening.
Without objection, ladies and gentlemen, oh, excuse me, new business from the council, forgive me. Anyone? Without objection, I'm gonna entertain a motion for closed session to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Casarog, seconded by Alderman Marx. Roll call vote, Mr. Clerk.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
We are now going to adjourn to closed session. We are coming back to take action, exactly, before we adjourn the council meeting. Mr. Darrell, good to, thank, good to see you. Thanks for your patience with everything going on with the supply chain stuff and...
We get there.
Oh, I know. I'm gonna turn the microphones off just for a second. A motion to return to open session would be in order? Motion by Alderman Marx, seconded by Alderman Casarog. Voice vote is sufficient to return to open session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are back in open session, ladies and gentlemen. We are, item 15, which is, consider approval of a voluntary separation agreement and release of all claims subject to modifications by legal counsel. Is there a motion, ladies and gentlemen? Alderman Mayor makes that motion. Alderman Marx makes that second. Any questions, any comments? Roll call order, Mr. Clerk, whenever you're available.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Item 15 has been adopted and approved with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero council members absent. With that, ladies and gentlemen, a motion to adjourn this City Council meeting is in order. Is there such a motion? Alderman Casarog makes the motion. All in favor of adjourning tonight's City Council meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. We'll take just a minute to transition to the committee of the whole, so we'll see you in 10 minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight's committee of the whole meeting is called to order. Let the record show that all the council members slash committee members are present. Item 2 is approval of committee of the whole minutes from August 16, 2021. Is there a motion? Alderman Marx makes the motion, and Alderman Casarog makes the second. Any questions on the minutes as presented? All in favor of approving the minutes of August 16, 2021, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 3A, consider draft resolution approving a payment in lieu of parking for the Walrus Room at 415 West State Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Swanson. Anything you want to add to this stuff?
Sure, so we talked briefly about this, but as previously stated, the Walrus Room would like to construct an outdoor dining area on the north side of the building. The outdoor dining area would require the removal, removal of three private off-street parking spaces. The city's adopted parking regulations do not require additional parking, however, for that outdoor area, however, reducing the number of existing private off-street parking spaces is not permitted unless an equivalent amount of parking spaces can be located within 350 feet of the subject property, or they may do a payment in lieu of the required parking in the amount of $10,000 per parking space. The Walrus Room has been unable to provide three parking spaces within the 350 feet and is requesting to pay $30,000 in $5,000 semi-annual payments over the course of the next three years. If approved, the payment would be used towards the city's ongoing efforts to construct appropriately located on-street or off-street public parking spaces. And David DeGroot is still with us this evening to answer any additional questions.
Questions for Mr. DeGroot? Alderman Maladra, sir?
So, David, I have, I have all of our questions. Is it more appropriate, Kilburg, or...
Way to throw, way to throw Tara under the bus there.
Yes, all right.
She just had to like, what the hell?
Yeah. So, the question was about anticipated parking issues going forward, and you didn't answer previously, so I'm curious what the answer would be now.
So, the, we're supposed to take that money, put it into a parking fund, and try to locate opportunities to provide service-level parking in the proximate area.
Right.
We have done that in the past with GME. We wound up moving a parking, like Landscape Island on Third Street further north, gaining spaces that way. There may be similar opportunities on Fifth Street in this area. If and when the old Inglewood Pantry Site redevelops, there may be opportunities there, depending on where access is. So, if, we haven't observed a problem with parking currently with the center, but if it becomes an issue, we would have some funds then to...
We have some safety.
To work with.
Okay, thanks.
Just to follow up with that, any new business would be subject to the requirements of parking. So, let's say Riley's Drug became a restaurant or something like that, there would be parking requirements based on the square feet, right? Would they be subject to those parking requirements?
In the, in defined area of the downtown, no. You're not required to provide additional parking, and that is really what has allowed restaurants to, to locate in downtown Geneva, is not having to meet those high parking requirements.
Okay.
That requirement was eliminated 20 years ago.
Okay.
Unless you take away existing parking, that's where it triggers.
Okay, okay.
Right.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second on this matter. Any additional questions or comments from Mr. DeGroot or City Administrator Dawkins? If not, a simple voice vote will advance this matter to the City Council. All in favor of this action contemplated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The matter has been accepted unanimously and will be advanced to the City Council for additional consideration. Item 3B, consider draft ordinance authorizing the extension of municipal water service to the property located at 1 North 533 Peck Road without annexation.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno, I believe.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Swanson. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so the property located at 1 North 5 through 3 Peck Road is not located within the corporate limits of the city of Geneva. 65 ILCS 511 1491 provides that the corporate authorities of a municipality may provide the extension and maintenance of water mains outside the corporate limits. However, such service shall not be extended unless a majority of the owners of record of the real property petition for the service. The property is owned by Anton and Mary Burkhardt, and they have requested to connect to the city of Geneva's municipal water service without annexation. And again, I have David present to answer any additional questions.
Is there a cost to the city? I mean, do we have to put any--
No, it's at their cost.
The water lines are already there?
It's on that side of the street?
Yeah, they're on the east side of Peck.
Okay.
Not the west side, so--
Thank you, so there is water.
It's actually just like a little pocket that's, I think, surrounded on three sides by the city.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else? We have Alderman Mayor? No, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of item 3B, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This matter will be advanced to the City Council for additional consideration. Item-- excuse me. Item 4, new business, public comment. Anyone online, Mr. McCready?
No one joining us this evening.
Any new business from the dais? I'll entertain a motion, ladies and gentlemen, to go into closed session on the review of certain closed-session minutes and approval of destruction of closed-session audio recordings of September 2016 through December 2019 pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes 12/2-06C and the setting of a price-for-sale or lease of property owned by the public body. How's that for a full agenda item? Is there a motion? Motion by Marx, seconded by Alderwoman Burkhardt. All in favor of going into closed session for the purposes described, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. We'll give it a second to switch over. Great. I will now entertain a motion to return to open session. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno.
Second.
Alderman Swanson makes the second. All in favor of returning to open session, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are back in open session, ladies and gentlemen. There is one item of business to consider in open session, and that is to consider the City Council closed-session minutes approved for release, including partial minutes of March 3, 2013 regarding the purchase, sale, or lease of property; partial minutes of August 5, 2013 regarding the purchase, sale, or lease of property; partial minutes of December 2, 2013 regarding partial sale or lease of property; the remaining minutes of August 8, 2016 regarding the purchase, sale, or lease of property; and the full complement of minutes from December 2, 2019 regarding the review of closed-session minutes. Is there a motion to so release?
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes that motion. Alderman Maladra makes the second. Mr. City Attorney, would you prefer a roll or voice?
I'd do a roll.
Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Kasserag.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
That motion has been adopted with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and all council members are present. Those will be released post haste. Anything else for the benefit of the community or this committee? If not, a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting is in order. Alderman Marx makes that motion. Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of adjourned this meeting of the committee of the whole, please indicate by saying aye.